Hello.
Somebody you and Marty got to me by a black. Black shirts, tan thing.
I grabbed the first thing I could find. I have not been home long.
I put on my Cliff Hammack shirt.
You got an official shirt on.
Cliff gave me a couple of them.
I have a Hammack shirt on.
It looks just as good as ours.
I got on my Cliff Hammack shirt and my Billy Ellis shoes.
Oh, Lord.
Bought them at a yard sale.
You ready to go then?
They still had the paper in the.
We need to get him to have another sale then.
That's right.
Some brand new stuff.
When you hear that, that Patty's having a sale, yard sale, go.
Not, not be able to.
Good stuff, huh?
He said Billy, Billy said he didn't like them. I said, how you know? He didn't even try them on.
He didn't like the way they looked ever done.
Oh, I, I'm, I'm mistaken. I didn't put them on. I looked at them, but I got on the other one.
So did we do anything for Justin? I've been out of town for two weeks.
We had a lunch on last Thursday?
I believe it was.
Yeah.
We did a proclamation forum at the last meeting too.
Yeah, I talked to him, but I was hoping, I figured we'd all done something. I appreciate that.
Yeah, the police, the police cooked. Good food.
Oh, yeah, really good.
And they gave, the staff gave him something. I can't remember. What did y'all give him? I don't even know. Did I see it?
Chicken burgers.
Yeah.
Okay.
Never underestimate the difference that you made. Thank you, Justin.
Oh, okay.
And it has our seal on it. And, oh, we gave him, he always keeps notebooks.
Paper notebook.
Yeah, like a journal. And we gave him a fresh one of those.
Nice.
Okay.
All right, at six thirty, we'll call the special meeting for the Bulling Springs Town Council for September twelfth to order. The only item on the agenda is the public hearing. So we will declare the public hearing opened at six thirty. And move to the staff report. Mr. Parker. Good evening, council. You've got in front of you a fairly robust agenda packet. Probably caught you by surprise. I am gonna give you a very brief overview of the history that's somewhat complicated that the town has had with the post office. Here in the summary of your financing to purchase, financing to purchase the property, Rhonda has outlined, and Justin have outlined, the steps take, the steps needed for us to move forward. We, tonight, you all will need to make a decision as to whether we are gonna move forward and continue to look into acquiring the property. That's both one oh one and one oh three North Main Street. Or if this is something that you do not want town staff to continue to investigate. And so that's really the first decision that has to be made. And then after that decision, we get into the nitty, if, if yes, we have to get into the nitty gritty and actually decide the financing package and how all of those, the numbers are gonna come out. As you move off that staff report, I wanted to highlight for you tonight a few areas where acquiring the post office was never in our plans because we didn't realize it was a possibility. But how to work around the post office being outside of our control is in our plans. And so that's what you've got there with site-specific opportunities on page five of your agenda packet. It talks about the third bullet down Maine, Maine slash College Streetscape improvements and also public green. And I've got that for you as well in page six where it shows the Main Street College Avenue signalized intersection there. Page seven where it has Maine College Streetscape improvements where that was the third highest priority in our downtown master plan. And then post office redevelopment was actually number eight in that same master plan, which is on page eight of your agenda packet. I then gave you the Streetscape Greenway amenity preference guide, just to refresh your memory. That's on pages nine and ten. And so it talks about the need for open space and green space. But what you'll also potentially notice is that there is a large demand for a gathering space and plaza and for some type of public parking lot or green space. This isn't to say that we would knock down the post office if we acquired it, but it's just giving us options. And that, I think, from a staff perspective is what, why we encourage the acquisition of this property is because it gives us options and gives us the ability to make decisions about what's happening at the only signalized intersection in our town. And this property being right there in the heart of downtown is, to me, and I think from the staff perspective, critical for our development. The next page you've got, page eleven, it's just a map with a red line. This is what we got. Have you seen this before? I wasn't sure if this had been to council before. This is the schematic from McGill to reroute the power line structure coming from what would be right in front of Maxwell Hammack Insurance down to the stoplight. And so you can tell from this map the critical role that that post office property would play in actually being able to reroute that power. And then, sorry, pages twelve through eighteen are a historical tour, so to speak, of letters and timelines and communications and other things that I have found. This correspondence summaries from nineteen eighty-seven about how the town should deal with the post office in its current location. You've got a plan in there that talks about doing some renovations where Ms. Hoyle was looking at potentially renovating that property and that discussion and how that went. And again, because the town didn't own the property, we weren't able to have a direct hand in those discussions. You've got a letter from Rick Howell where he was writing a post office committee about his conversation with Representative Sue Myrick at the time to talk about how they had requested at that point the post office to be moved so that they could start doing delivery mail service. And that was in two thousand one. I'm sure that you've all looked ahead, so you know that the plan we have to present this evening, which Rhonda's gonna go through much more thoroughly than I ever could, involves a seven percent over seven years. A couple of highlights on that. This is, in the words of the local government commission, the best that we're gonna get. They, we do have longer and we could potentially wait. The issue with that is if interest rates continue to go up, there is no guarantee that Bank OZK would continue this funding plan because they were not, this is not the plan they originally gave us. Rhonda had to really work with them, really hit the pavement and talk to them. They wanted us to do a variable rate after so many years and we can't do that. So this is something that Rhonda's really had to work hard and diligently on. This would bring our yearly debt service to about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for year one. And then that number would go down after that, the way that the payments have to be structured. And again, this is a Rhonda question. But the way the payments have to be structured, we have to make the same payment on the interest for the duration of the loan. And so in the first year, we pay the maximum that we'll actually end up paying. And then every year they decrease as we continue to make those payments. Yeah, we just pay the same on the principal every year. Okay. That's what I was thinking. I did, ooh, Rhonda's been giving me a crash course. And then we'll also use some of the rental income to offset some of that debt service. And Rhonda has given you that information. So you've got several documents there in front of you. I'll turn it over to Rhonda so that she can come up here and explain that to you more in depth. But if you have any questions, please feel free to ask and let us know. Thank you all.
Thank you.
So it did not end up being the financing plan that we wanted, but it was the best I could do. As Zach, as Zach said, it is seven percent for seven years. Originally, they wanted to go five. They said they don't usually go for commercial, let commercial loans go longer than three. So, and were considered commercial. I asked them, could you please at least go maybe seven? And after several hours, he did say that they would allow us to go seven since they were a municipality and a good credit risk. I've had a couple of conference calls with the LGC. They have said that banks are just not wanting to loan money right now to us, especially for a long-term fixed rate. I'm not exactly sure why, because they would be locking into a higher fixed rate, but I'm not a banker, so I'm not sure what that's about. But I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
What was the estimated generator revenue from the post office again? If I remember right, five thousand?
It was a little bit more than fifty thousand a year.
A year, okay.
Yeah. And, and actually, we would start making debt service payments this year. And that would be around a hundred thousand. Assuming all of these variables. And we'd get about, assuming that too, we'd probably get maybe three quarters, maybe eight months out of, of rent. Depending on when we close too.
So this amortization schedule, it's, it's based off borrowing six thirty-eight, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand? So we're paying the balance of the purchase price?
With ARPA funds.
Okay. It's what we discussed, right?
Which we discussed, yes.
Right, okay.
Do you have enough ARPA funds to cover the closing and the origination fee and all that stuff?
Right. It's a point five percent origination fee. It's about three thousand dollars, I think it was. We can write a check for that. Rather than rolling that into this.
Is that any more closing costs involved with that?
It's all, it's all I'm aware of.
Okay.
I think we've been told too that currently that would not require tax increase.
Currently, well.
I mean, I know, I know we can't say what's gonna happen in the future.
Right. Yeah, we're talking about out of pocket now. We were trying to come as close to break even as possible. We're not going to be able to do anywhere near that now. Our first full year of out of pocket is going to be around probably seventy-eight-ish thousand. So figuring on the debt service payments being about a hundred and twenty-eight and getting about fifty thousand. Do you have the option? Of course, next year, the leases will be up and we could go up. I did not factor in any kind of rent increases.
Do we have any idea about what they have, the increase that's been taking place? When the, how, how long are leases that they normally get?
I believe that they said five years.
Do we have access to what, how the increase that lease is?
I know that when Justin projected rent for the future, he had projected about a ten percent increase. So I'm assuming maybe around that.
Ten percent on, what is it, forty-five hundred or five thousand? That's, that puts us at under four or five hundred dollars a month, not thousands more. So right now, the revenue would generate about forty percent of the debt service payment.
I think it'd be a stretch to get ten percent out of them, just based off what I know. But I don't, I mean, I don't know for sure.
It may be possible with the post office since it would be so difficult for them to.
It's, it's a possibility.
But, yeah, the other. Please, let's see, I don't know. But in the grand scheme of things, you've got a, got a Streetscape project and uptown or downtown revitalization. And it's right in the center of town. It's the only corner we would have control of.
Do we know what, where the right of way stops there? Is it right at the back of the sidewalk?
I would not know.
It's on the map, it's on the map.
Was it on the map?
It's, it's, it has to be beyond the drive to your place, doesn't it? So I think it's right at the adjoining building there.
Did you ask about the right of way?
Yeah, the right of way, all the way around it.
I want to, so the right of way there is actually a problem because with our Streetscape going forward, we, our intention is to widen that intersection there to allow for better traffic flow. But we have run into the issue that the sidewalk, if you look on the one with the red line, which is page eleven, that sidewalk is almost cutting into a parking space. And that is the extent of our right of way. So we are getting really close to exhausting the right of way that we have. Which is another, that's something we've worked with McGill during our Streetscape planning to try to combat and work around as best we can, not knowing that this opportunity was available.
And are there other addition, are there additional ARPA funds we could consider?
Yes, we still have about a little over eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars in ARPA funds. Not including what we were going to take out to complete the purchase.
The down payment?
Right. So that is a possibility.
We already have them.
I would have to get in touch with the bank to see if they would finance a lesser amount with the same terms, but.
And that has to be spent by December thirty-first of this year, is that correct?
It has to be spent by December thirty-first of twenty, well, it has to be committed by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four and spent by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six, I believe are the dates.
Okay.
Have we already allocated those remaining eight hundred?
It's unallocated.
It's unallocated. Well, that changes things.
Yeah, that's a good bit of money.
No, yeah.
I think originally that money was going to be spent on the Streetscape and the Streetscape planning. Though it's, in my mind, this is part of the Streetscape, though not a part that we initially planned for or intended on you know, using our ARPA money for. But it's definitely something that with the Streetscape, I think this falls right in that line. But I think that was the plan with that. Rhonda, correct me if I'm wrong.
And two, you don't wanna spend all your money. I mean, so we've got that money put back. And actually, seven percent for seven years is good.
According to the LGC, we're lucky to have gotten it, so.
So if we went with seven percent, I mean, do we have the option to pay more?
Yes, there's not a prepayment penalty.
Right.
And we would have the option of allocating ARPA funds to pay the debt service, would we not?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, to make a difference.
Is there a payoff early fee or fine?
There shouldn't be.
But that was part of my RFP and I can make sure there's not a prepayment penalty.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. That, that's, I mean, I, that was, yeah. The majority of the real estate transactions are usually not.
Yeah, that's gotta be payoff fine.
Yeah.
It says prepayment penalty not applicable.
Right. So.
Well, if we got it down to five hundred thousand dollars, it would be more manageable with the rental income coming in. Or got it somewhere close to that.
A lot closer to the revenue of the debt service.
So we would need another hundred and sixty-eight thousand? How, how much is the loan? Six hundred?
Hundred and thirty-eight.
Six thirty-eight, we need a hundred.
Hundred and thirty-eight.
Hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
We would basically double the amount or take it out of the ARPA.
That's.
And still have money left over.
The Bank of OZK would give us the same terms on the lesser amount of money.
Right.
We don't have, we have the concept of the street design, right? We don't have a full design yet.
I don't know that I can answer that. I don't know.
I don't, I don't think so. Especially not in this property, because this, we, we.
We're in the.
It wasn't on our radar.
Right, we're.
Well, I guess that's my, the point I'm trying to make is.
There've been some.
Bending shit.
We're.
So have the justification, say, hey, we're already spending money on the Streetscape project by buying these properties. And it gives us a lot more room to work in the Streetscape project.
It, so we have the downtown master plan. And then now we're in the middle of a Streetscape project, a land use plan, and then a park master plan. So they're all kind of running concurrently. But the Streetscape project is in limbo for right now because we're trying to figure out if we're gonna have this availability, of this property or not.
Well, we're, we're still waiting on the state budget and to see what money's come from, if any money's come from there. But dipping more into the ARPA funds, this is, this is gonna be a question of sacrificing the, the full South Main that we had intended versus being able to acquire this property that, and, and with the intersection improvements that we've prioritized with all that. So I mean, I, I think that's probably a reality that, and I, I don't know that eight hundred thousand dollars without a significant chunk of state money, that we're gonna get very far down South Main anyway. So that's just kinda the way I see it.
And I think maybe we even had some thoughts about when we do the, whatever we're calling it, the park here, that maybe the Streetscape might need to be looked at again anyway.
With the, with the new courtyard here and then.
And those are lumped together in our planning process. So McGill is handling the Streetscape slash courtyard. And then the park process is kind of on the other side of the coin. And it's with Bolton Mink. I can never remember their name. But they are doing the land use plan slash park master plan. So the courtyard area, it's my understanding that planning and financing has already essentially been worked out or allocated in the budget. Rhonda, is that right? That was my understanding of that.
We voted for that in July.
Yeah, we got the grant for that.
Yeah, as I said, we've got grant money tied up with the courtyard part.
Oh, yeah.
Correct.
We got the money for it.
It's just the, it would, I mean, ultimately, there's a finite amount of money. So if you put eight hundred thousand dollars here, somewhere down the road, we can't plug eight hundred thousand dollars. But this is the priority. You know, certainly, I mean, me personally, I'm nobody, but I would think it, it would be one. But it's a once in a life or once in a thirty-year kinda thing for me, that we would get this opportunity. And then I think we know if we ever acquired the property, we wouldn't, it would be very, it would require some kind of extraordinary circumstance that would develop for us to then sell that property. So I think that would become just a permanent fixture of town-owned property at that corner.
Well, what type?
It's always on the table. If we decide we could, the property, we could, if we got in a bind or something, we could, we could dispose of the property.
Right.
And, and me, if we owned the property, it'd be better for us to decide how to dispose of it than somebody else.
Well, and ultimately, that's the, I mean, the obvious benefit of ownership is you all would control what happens there to a degree. You know, and, and so we, staff through you all would be able to direct and control actions that happen on that corner. We wouldn't have to worry about right of way as much with the street because we own the property. So we're not gonna fight ourselves over the right of way that we want.
And also the, the traffic light there, all that is a critical area and something we're hoping when the state gets their budget, that we're gonna be able to improve.
Yes.
A lot in.
But what type of improvements were they, there's, there's not any improvements guaranteed at this point, are there? Improvements with the property, like upfits? That's to be negotiated with the new lease or?
Own the post office?
The post office.
Yeah, no, none that I'm aware of.
Okay. Well, that's a good, that, that's a good point. If, if we were to buy, it's a good point. If you're gonna do upfits, then you can talk about price. Or you could talk about longevity of the lease, you know, where you try to recoup some of those outfit costs, say, in the first five years and then have the right to renew for five more years at a lesser rate. Stuff like that could be beneficial.
I think Justin reviewed with you all the, the newer parts of the buildings or the roof that Kitty had just replaced and several other things like that she had fixed. So structurally, it, I mean, it appears to be fine. I know that, I personally think it's worth more than eight hundred thousand dollars. I think that if, if someone else, a developer, retail, retail developer, whatever, were to get that property, I think that she would charge them significantly more. But.
She could get more than eight hundred thousand out of it.
I feel fairly certain.
Let's, uh.
Oh, subjective.
Let's move to public comments for a bit. And then we'll come back with, once we close the hearing, we can continue the discussion. But I wanna make sure we invite anyone that would like to comment from the public. If you, if you would like, you can come up and state your name and let us know your thoughts. Anyone?
I hope there might be some back here in at the refrigerator.
Donna Mills. I'm the postmaster here at the post office here in Bulling Springs. This is the first that we were hearing of anything being on the table. Kitty did not let us know anything about possibly selling the property.
And let me add, she asked us not to let you know either.
She asked you not to.
Asked us not to discuss it publicly.
So, but I had talked with our, uh, real estate department there for the postal service just to see when our lease does come up. And it shows that it is in effect until October thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. So with that change, if you were to purchase, we would be locked in until twenty twenty-five. I know a lot of people have complained where the post office is located because it is hard to get in and out of there at that intersection. And I don't know what type of rate that you might go up to. I know you're talking about raising the, the rent. That is something that if you were to purchase, they would have to be notified of the new owners of the building. And we would have to see if there was a cheaper place possibly that we might could move the post office to since there has been a lot of complaints with the location of it being in that busy intersection. I know probably when it was put in it originally, it probably wasn't that congested in that area. I've only been there since two thousand and nineteen. So, but we would, you know, appreciate, if you do purchase it, if you could keep in contact with us, that way, if there is another option of us relocating possibly, that we could check into that without it being last minute, because there's a lot of things that we would have to work out as far as post office box sections, you know, buildings don't come with post office boxes. So there will be a lot of work that goes into having to relocate. Not that we're wanting to relocate. We like, you know, where we are there next to the college. We have a lot of college students that come in just for that simple reason, that we are close to them. But we would, you know, like to be kept in the loop if at all possible. And communication open there so that we can try to determine what's best for us. I know they were talking more about the post office than they were the building next door to us. So I feel like our lot seems to be more popular in wanting to do something there. So if the town were to purchase that particular lot, and I know you were saying something about moving power lines and. that particular lot, and I know you were saying something about moving power lines and things. Um, if the post office were to stay there, what, I mean, how is that going to affect as far as our parking area? Uh, our back parking, it getting in and out, because I'm, I'm not sure how the power lines would be moved and relocated through our lot.
Everything I see here wouldn't impact you at all.
Okay.
Uh, Noah, do you have the, the?
There has to be a pole there in the back.
Throwback graph up there on TV?
As parking as horrible as it is now without.
Yeah, I don't, and I would, I don't, I don't, I don't envision it.
I, I would imagine you'll see a couple telephone poles.
It just, we, the way it is now, we would have to have Kitty's permission to relocate the line there. But I don't, I don't, I'm, he's, he's gonna bring it up, but I don't see it as impacting you at all. Just be relocating some lines.
Kind of putting Noah on the spot, sorry.
He's up for the challenge, he's up there.
He'll get it, give him a second.
Page eleven.
Yep.
And also, I think I'm speak for, I think I know what I'm talking about then, that, you know, even if we purchased the land, the property, that we're not gonna immediately do anything, you know, I would think that. You, if you can see, can you see the monitor?
Yeah, we have several planning projects ahead of us before we get to that point.
The red line there is just, and that's just where they would, and it might not whether there be a post there somewhere, there's probably one around there somewhere. But the main thing would be if you scroll up to where the, where it, it comes across there.
Comes across.
It's the overhead power lines right now, but on telephone poles.
It's a real high, the real high lines, the Duke power lines are way up there. It's my understanding that AT&T and them have agreed to put theirs underground, that they have the capabilities of putting them underground.
Yeah.
So, does anybody else see it any different? I don't think it would impact you at all.
Okay, so there wouldn't be anything actually put poles in the middle of our parking area front or back, either one?
And I, and I'll throw this out there, we're.
I think there's a pole there anyway.
We're also contemplating building something out here in front of the municipal building, and I wouldn't be opposed if, if it made sense, if the time came and the building was up to relocate you there, right, I mean, literally five hundred feet east along the street, so.
Yeah.
Um, it's just an idea, I'm not saying that's what we're going for, but we would have options if it, that time ever came.
But, but I think the intent is to keep the same tenants, to keep the revenue coming in, to c- to continue with the, the same level, and then if we have an opportunity as a good partnership later on to, to do something different.
Oh, yeah, I agree with that whole argument.
Yes.
Yeah, we, we, we don't want to displace the post office because of complaints or otherwise, we understand the great value and that there would probably be a lot of people be upset that they lost their PO box if it were to move somewhere else.
Right.
And it is a part of our town and a vital part of the university, so we, we want to continue the partnerships with, with Laura and, and, you know, but we're looking at the revenue stream as well, so it might be something that's our better partnership later on.
Okay, right, thank you.
And I think we would, I would al- always try to keep you in the, I think we would always try to, so you know what's going on, we wouldn't, we wouldn't come and say, you gotta be gone tomorrow or anything like that.
Right.
You are Laura, or I don't think we'd be looking at, I certainly wouldn't be in favor of raising Laura's rent by ten percent. Now, the post office, federal government, that's different. I'd be forgetting all we can from them.
Right, well, we have had a lot of our customers that complain that it is hard to get in and out of the post office area in the front and in the back, and you know, they think that's Indy five hundred, I think, crossing that intersection, and we try to pull out from the back and they park on the side of the road right there and you can't see and you almost get run over. Um, we've almost been hit several times trying to inch out, and that is one of the big complaints about where we are located, but it is a good location as far as close to the college, close to everybody through there, you know, uh, a good area for us to be, it's just getting in and out of is awful, so.
Just for, just for long-term, uh, planning and dreaming, there's an old town hall we're trying to do something with and.
You know, I thought about that.
I really think that would make a good old classic-looking post office at some point, again, that's way down the road.
Way down the road.
It's near Gardner Web.
Right across the street.
Well, several years ago, there was a, a plan or discussion from part of the post office about trying to, to relocate the post office and consolidate Latibor, Mooresboro, and Bulling Springs into one unified, is there a plan like that that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of right now, no. Um, they had talked about that years ago when they were downsizing a lot of the offices, taking carriers out and consolidating them into larger offices, um, which is what they called duode, they would take, for instance, Mooresboro carriers were taken out and put into Forest City, but Mooresboro still had their post office boxes. Uh, now Mooresboro routes are back in Mooresboro, so they found that it wasn't as cost-saving because they were having to pay them uh, a lot of miles, you know, to come to that facility, uh, just to backtrack to come to deliver the mail in that area, so I don't think that they would downsize, um, and I've not heard of anything in the future as a close by, so.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I'm probably the only one who remembers the day we walked from the old post office to the new post office the day it opened. I remember that well.
Anyone else that would like to speak during the public comment time?
Partly, I would have to without crying.
All right.
Sorry, don't cry.
You're okay, all right.
You're good, you take your time.
Talking friends here.
You know us all, so. Woo! We're not strangers. Um, I guess finding out about this and the classifieds, um, was just, uh, a little touchy. And by the way, Max Hammick's the one who reads classifieds and saw it.
It was in the classifieds?
Tonight's meeting.
Tonight's meeting.
Tonight's meeting. Oh, okay, okay. I'm sure my daddy's the only one in Cleveland County that still reads classifieds, that section anyway. But you understand that Kitty would, didn't want us to say anything that's. Oh, yeah. We wasn't intentionally hiding anything from anybody. Right, right, um, I, so my first question, I guess, this red line, um, and, and she and I have had several conversations since I found out about this. Um, that red line's my driveway, right?
It's behind your driveway, it, it would, it would, it would not impact your driveway. It's a, it's a, just a power line way up in the air connecting to a pole that I think is already there.
Oh, okay.
I, I, I mean, I'm serious, I, I don't think it would impact, it's not a, it's not gonna be a, that's, that's a red line, but it's just gonna be a power line.
It's overhead.
It's connected to a pole that's already there.
Okay.
We're trying to get all the power lines away from the intersection, clean it up some, so, I, I, does anybody see it any differently? I, I don't think it would impact your parking, your driveway at all.
Kitty literally told me that the town wanted to move all the power poles from Main Street, from Maxwell Hammick to the stoplight behind the buildings on our side, so the post office, the median garden, so forth, that's what she told me, that all the poles would be coming back there.
But I don't think that, but, I don't think that was correct, I think that there, and there may be a new pole back there. But it wouldn't impact you at all, and I, and I think right here, there's a pole already there that they would just be re- rerouting those.
There are a couple back there already.
Yeah, so I, I don't, I don't foresee there being any new poles in that area at all.
Okay, okay, um.
And I don't think we would ever do anything that would impact your driveway or your parking.
Okay.
I, I wouldn't be in favor of that. I don't think anybody else would.
Thank you. Um, and I, I guess the other thing I just wanted to go on public record, so to speak, is that, um, I opened two years ago, September seventh. And perhaps I shouldn't have done this to a building that I don't own. But, um, my husband and I invested fifteen thousand dollars to get that building to what it is now. It was very much, when we walked in, when we acquired the lease, it was very much a, um, a Dr. Weathers nineteen eighties dentist office. Um, his equipment was gone, but the holes from the equipment were in the floor, they were in the walls, they were in the ceiling. Um, it was the nineteen eighties wood paneling, um, the, the parquet floor, I mean, you know. So, we, we've put fifteen thousand dollars of our own money into that building that can't go with me if I have to go somewhere else. So, I would very much like to stay.
And again, that's not our intent to displace you or the post office, I mean, we, we want local businesses to thrive, and we want, um, the history there to thrive, uh, we're, we're trying to secure that and keep that from ever changing hands, by the town buying it, we have control.
Right, as opposed to Walgreens or somebody.
And having control and having relationships with you guys, that makes it a lot easier to, to make decisions, uh, moving forward in the future, from my standpoint, so.
Right, yeah, we want you to stay.
I agree, we want you to stay.
Yeah, we're, yeah.
And it's not our intent to displace the post office either, although everybody, as, as you said, you know, everybody on every survey, move the post office, move the post office, move the post.
Right, right, absolutely, my whole life.
Whole lot more, more concern there than, than in your place, and I would I would say that probably the post office would be there longer than I'm sitting here, or longer than I'm here. I don't foresee, we would, we don't, it's not our intent to just say we're getting rid of the post office, they gotta go. Uh, for, first of all, we need the revenue stream for a while, and we would just, who knows, the post office may say when we, when the lease comes up, we don't wanna renew it, we're, we're going somewhere else. That way, we would be able to control what happened to that property.
Sure.
To me, it's, it, that's the, the main thing for me is who's in control, and I, I'm not kicking out the post office, I'm I would see us probably if they are willing thus renewing the lease for a foreseeable future, so, uh, I, I think you'd be there long enough to recover your and you did a good job, by the way, because I've been in there, so, it's not our intent to displace you or our intent may be more to displace the post office than it is you, but.
Right, right, well, I mean, on the flip side of it, having been, I mean, literally a lifelong resident of Bulling Springs, I, I see the vision and I see, you know, the streetscapes and the, the parks and, and we do need more parking and, and, and I, I get that and I see that and I like that and, and I want that for this town. Um, it's just having that personal stake in it.
I understand.
And I, I really do, like, I, I fully understand and sympathize with how you found out about it. Um, that didn't come from, that didn't come from our end, and I would say that not only is it our intent not to displace you, it is our intent while, while it's us six sitting here, to make sure that you aren't displaced, like, that's the reason why we're working really hard to try to make these numbers work, so that, as you said, an outside box company doesn't come in and create another big box store on our intersection, and instead, we can keep it local, uh, to me, that's the desire.
Oh, a- and like I said, as a lifelong resident, I agree a hundred percent, that property's worth a whole lot, eight hundred thousand dollars.
A- and it's also our kind of, I don't know that she totally said this, but if we, if we turn it down, then it's still gonna go on the market.
Right.
Yeah, Kitty, Kitty and the move ourselves.
Sure, for sure.
To me, that would be.
Yeah, I've gotten that from her myself, I'm, I'm aware of that.
Yes. Yeah.
So.
All right.
But thank you for your courage.
Thank you, Laura.
And after tonight, you won't have to worry about us knowing what's going on because, you know, it's public now.
It'll all be public now.
And, and I didn't like that deal, but, you know, she's, that was one of the things she said, you know, one of the stipulations she put on dealing with, so. So we, we did honor it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Okay, uh, so we'll close the public hearing at seven eleven. And council, questions, discussion?
I, I have a question, the lease, the loan, could we renegotiate that loan at any point? I mean, once we, like, let's say, next two years from now, think Z has a better deal.
Refinance.
Could we refinance, they wouldn't, we wouldn't be locked into that, would we?
No, there's no prepayment penalty, we'd have to go through the same hoops of going through the LGC and all of that again, but, um.
So if interest rates happen to take a big dive, we.
We can re- refinance.
To me, if, if we don't do this, then all of our options are kinda out the window, it's a lot of money.
It is a very, yeah, a lot of money.
And it's risky, it's risky.
And you went through a lot to get these terms, so, going from six thirty-eight to five hundred. I, I mean, I think, in my opinion, it's gonna be harder to get money, banks are not wanting to get loan money, we're going to eventually a cashless society.
Thousand is not a lot of money, to them, it's not, to us, it is.
Yeah, yeah, and, and.
And even, even, even if we, since there was no prepayment penalty, even if we vote tonight to proceed, and then we say later on, we wanna take ARPA funds and pay that on that loan, there's nothing that would prevent us from that.
Exactly, we can do that.
But it's not gonna change our principal payment, is it?
We can ask for that, whatever we apply to be applied to principal, if you're gonna prepay something, you'd ask for them to apply it to your principal.
Oh, yes.
But the mortgage, but the payment wouldn't change because you're not reimbursed.
The payment would not.
But, yeah, there's.
Payment's not gonna change.
We're still gonna pay the seventy-six hundred dollars a month, it's just gonna pay less interest.
But, but you're gonna pay.
Yeah, we'll pay it less interest overall.
And you mentioned that the ARPA funds could be dedicated to debt service, right?
The ARPA funds are being, it, it's hard to explain. Um, whenever we do apply, we have designated our ARPA funds as revenue replacement, and when you do that, um, it's a lot easier to use the money, so what I, I have been doing, whenever you say we wanna put four hundred and eight thousand dollars into the water sewer fund for, for, you know, future water lines, sewer lines, whatever, um, I take it out of, I reimburse the town for, um, water and sewer salaries. And so that money goes into the, that water sewer fund, and then it rolls into the fund balance at the end of the year. So it comes out of the special revenue fund into the water sewer fund, into the fund balance. So the money's still sitting there, waiting to be spent on the water sewer projects. So, to answer your question, I'm going to use it for general fund salaries, which is what I've been doing for general fund money that we've needed to move. Going to the general fund, we'll say it salaries, reimburse ourselves for salaries, and then, you know, we've just kinda supplanted the money.
But if they would redo the loan at five hundred, then, I mean, we're only talking about using a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars of that eight hundred and some thousand to get it down to five hundred, which gets us closer to revenue neutral.
I suppose if you wanted, if that's what you want to do, if you want to change the, the principal, or the, the loan amount to the borrowed amount to five hundred thousand, uh, I would have to go back to them and see if we can get the same terms, seven percent for seven years. Um, but I suppose if that's what you want to do, you can make the motion to, would that be appropriate for them to make the motion if those terms are agreeable to OZK? I don't know.
I mean, heck, what would it look like if they come back and increase the interest or shorten the term amount or both? Would it still be the same payment, but now we're paying it off faster, for one?
Well, you can always pay it off faster.
The point is not to, to be closer to revenue than, uh, neutral, right? So you're saying, yeah, to keep it at where it is now and pay it off faster with our, our concerns?
It, it, yeah, I mean, it's, it's hard to get, especially little banks like that, to get loans.
I think the only reason, and they are the only bank I got a proposal from, and I think that's just because that's our bank.
So I'm just saying, if they're willing to give you the money, you better take it.
Better take it.
So I would, if it was me, I would, I would take the whole amount and then, you know, we're doing good, just turn around and, you know, put it on extra principal, I mean, our payment's gonna be the same, you still got the ARPA funds, you're paying less interest.
You know, I have concern that we're maybe extending ourselves a little bit much on debt service and then if we turn around and pay off the principal a little quicker, potentially losing a safety net of our concerns for something else.
Well, I mean, you just kinda have to watch and see how the money goes, but you've got that safety net knowing that you've got that extra money that you could take to make up the difference in the loan payment and the revenue.
Yeah, to me, another consideration too is, you know, and don't get me wrong, I'm all. To me, another consideration too is, you know, and don't get me wrong, I'm all for the streetscape and all that. But that's down the road, this is now.
That's what I'm concerned about.
Keep that eight hundred thousand dollars for something down the road and miss this opportunity. And I'm not saying we have to do either. I'm not saying we have to do either. Naturally, if we take another hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars out of there, that's less money we got. But with, Zach's gotta earn his keep, he's gotta get us more grants, we gotta spend somebody else's money.
Yeah.
There's a lot out there, and he understands, and he's, I mean, and we've done good at that. So, to me, this opportunity is now.
Rhonda, what do you think? I mean, as an accountant.
You don't have to answer.
Well.
You know, financially, you know, it's hard to get money, it's hard to get a fixed rate, and, you know.
I was shocked that I didn't get any, I didn't get any proposals, I begged the OZK to give me one.
Well, Kim, we not make a motion to go forward with the loan as is, a six thirty-eight at seven, contingent on if they'll reduce, if they'll change the principal down to five hundred and see what the interest rate is. If it's a better deal, then we take it. If it's not, we stick with what we got.
Yeah, I'd be okay with that. I mean, we're not backing out, we're just.
We're not backing out, we're just putting the contingency.
They say if they give us a better deal, we take it, if they don't, we keep this one.
So you would prefer me to go back to them and ask for five hundred thousand instead of six thirty-eight, but if they don't want to do that, stick with six thirty-eight?
Don't tell them till after.
You wanted to ask for a cheaper interest rate.
Well, I mean, we could see what they'll do, I mean.
You could just propose that to them.
Or five hundred, that's the current interest rate.
It's less risk to them.
Sure.
It's less of a loan.
Yeah, I mean, you're just saying, you know, what if we just wanted our five hundred thousand? What would you do for us?
Yeah.
I'll present, I'll ask.
How will that affect the LGC review? Because, I mean, this is on a timeline where we have to have it approved and have to have, I mean, we're talking about, it's supposed to go to them, tentatively September thirteenth, and then review in October, and then, I mean, if we miss any of these windows of opportunity.
We need to solidify some stuff. I, right now, I think that you could, you could make the motion to accept six thirty-eight, but if they go to, but that's, that's one of you who needs to answer that, if that would be appropriate. We do have to have, I have to have an amortization schedule with the F level principal the way they want, and I have to have a contract or a proposal, written proposal. That's basically what I need, and it won't take him long to get me one if they would approve five hundred thousand for whatever percentage for seven years. I have no idea. This whole process has shocked me. When we financed the town hall, I think I sent out eight RFPs and got something from every bank that I sent one to, and now I had to beg for one, so it's definitely a different environment than it used to be.
Yeah, and, I mean, do you think we would need that extra money later for anything?
The hundred and whatever extra?
Sure.
Well, I'm gonna say, if you're gonna get it, you need to get it now.
Well.
If not, then propose the five hundred thousand.
But it appears to me that everybody, we're talking about, if we're not, if we're not gonna move forward, we don't wanna be talking about this. You know, if we're gonna move forward, we, so, I mean, this is move forward if we're not gonna buy the property.
Correct.
We don't need the loan. So it seems, it appears to me that we're kinda, I'm hearing from everybody that possibly, correct me if I'm wrong, we're all in agreement that we need to purchase the property.
I'm just having a hard time swallowing that pill that we're all doing this on a what-if and kinda stretching ourselves, and now we have the banks not even wanting to loan us money.
Well, not just us.
No, the banks aren't, we don't belong.
But the point is.
So, so let's, let's do what if, what if we pass?
We might see a Walgreens go up.
We might see Laura displaced, we might see the post office displaced, or we might see, I'm not even gonna say it, a vape shop!
A mega vape shop.
I wish you hadn't said that. A third one.
A third one, you don't understand, we lose control unless we purchase the property. And I don't see what we lose a lot of, of course, it's gonna take some of our money, if we are in control. We're not, we're not wanting to displace the post office or Laura, we're just wanting the control of what the future holds for that property. Because at some point in time, the post office probably is gonna say, we're not gonna renew the lease, we're gonna do something else, we're gonna move. If we start putting buildings up here, maybe they come to us and say, we wanna relocate, and they're just gonna change tenants. To me, it's, I just think it's an opportunity that if we let it get going, that, we lose that, we lose, we're not a, we're not a player anymore.
So Patrick.
I don't know really what the, I don't know what the hundred and thirty-eight thousand would do to the payments without being able to punch it into a formula.
Could you, could you, the bank's committed to that, if they were, if the council was gonna proceed to purchase, basically authorizing, you know, you helped me on this, but you're authorizing a, basically a loan up to a maximum of those terms. Now, if, so that it can be moved forward, I know that the LGC's gonna approve it, would, I mean, would the LGC approve if you submitted it based on those terms, just to get approval of that, I mean, if you're gonna get it for five hundred, you know, bar less, would that, would the LGC, would that be an automatic approval, because they've already approved up to that, and so then you wouldn't have to delay?
I think they would, they would, I would still go back to them and show them the change in the contract, they wouldn't have a problem passing it. As long as I can get everything in, I think, in the next week or so, it's not going to take OZK very long to come up with something different. You could, like he said, accept six thirty-eight unless something better comes along.
But there's a constraint on the deadline for the LGC, because they're gonna meet in October, and they're gonna have.
Right, and they really need to have everything as soon as possible, and if we delay it too long, it's going to, it's gonna push us into the November meeting, and if we go into the November meeting, then they have to wait on the twenty twenty-three audit. So that's gonna delay us a little bit, and we need to have it done by November. We need to know what we're doing by November, the end of November.
I move that we purchase the property and that we proceed with the loan as presented.
Okay, that motion is on the table from Councilwoman Green. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Gant. Further discussion and comments?
I have another comment. Now, I'm not saying that I think we should just forget that. But I think we proceed, and then if we wanna go back to them and say, what if we paid a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, what would that do? I think, I don't have any issue with that at all.
Yeah, and maybe, and just say, you know, could we maybe get a six percent interest rate if we borrowed for five point five? You know, yeah.
Well, might we make a friendly amendment to that motion?
Depends on how friendly.
Say, if Rhonda can obtain a loan for five hundred thousand at seven percent or less, then we would authorize that.
I don't have any issue with that, as long as we get everything, I don't think we wanna get in that November, gotta wait on the audit stuff, and then I'm not, know that Ms. Oil wants to wait. I don't know, you know, she's, she's not here. I don't have, I don't have any problem with that, as long as we get everything legally and correctly stated, that we don't, we're not doing something.
I think where we stand right now is we have a motion and a second on the original loan, and so I'm not a parliamentarian, I do not know how amendments work in this situation.
I'd have to, I'd have to.
If the main motioner agrees to a friendly amendment. Amendment.
Okay.
Correct.
I would need to hear the motion, I move that we proceeded as originally requested with the loan and purchased the property. What would be your amendment to that, Pat?
That we allow her to go back to the bank and seek a loan for down to five hundred thousand dollars at the same or less interest. If they come back and say, no, that would be eight percent, then we don't wanna do that. So it'd be.
And not to exceed the amount of six thirty-eight of the current presentation, but if an option is available for cheaper.
Then we also would have to, would we not need to instruct you to use a hundred and thirty-eight thousand of the ARPA funds to cover that? Could we do that later, or would that be?
I'll present a budget amendment in October's meeting, since, I didn't know what you were gonna do today, so I didn't.
So, you understand what we're gonna be proposing here?
It would be, it would be a maximum of six thirty-eight, basically a, because you don't wanna pay more than a hundred and thirty out of the ARPA funds, right? So it'd be a minimum or.
Maximum borrowing.
But you would still, but between six, five hundred and six thirty-eight.
Yeah.
And so, that would, that would meet the parameter of the hundred and thirty-eight, and not, if the K Maxx will, you know, will borrow as much or as little as you want, you can say, well, we'll just borrow three hundred thousand, and then that means you're gonna have to use way more ARPA funds, you know, which is you're not approving, so. Does that make sense? So it would be, and the intent of using ARPA funds is to get it down where it's more, the revenue is gonna cover the.
Right, she could utilize up to three hundred thousand of ARPA funds.
I think the council needs to be on board with spending the hundred and thirty-eight, which sounds like, I don't know, because your motion was for the full.
Well, it's a hundred and thirty-eight additional, so it's actually three hundred.
Okay, alright.
The total of ARPA would be three hundred, yeah, yes.
And that's on the, that's on the premise that we agreed to the eight hundred thousand dollar reset price, right?
Sure.
Yes, but that's been agreed upon by the seller.
Yeah, we've been agreed upon the eight hundred thousand.
Right.
We've not voted on that, but we agreed to purchase the property, we agreed to purchase it at eight hundred thousand dollars.
You agreed to purchase it for eight thousand dollars and you didn't?
Eight hundred thousand.
I mean, eight hundred thousand dollars and you authorized Justin to sign.
I think that was last month, or last, last month.
Up to eight hundred.
Yeah.
Right.
So we've already authorized the purchase, we're just authorizing financing tonight.
That's great.
And the contract is contingent upon this and the LGC.
We can't purchase it without financing.
That's very true.
Unless it all comes out.
The motion really is just to proceed with the loan. Is that correct? We've already agreed to purchase the property for up to eight hundred thousand dollars.
Right, now we're agreeing on the financing, so I'm understanding your motion to be between five hundred and six hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars borrowed at seven percent or less.
Or less.
How does that sound?
Yeah.
That sound, that's, but for the seven-year term or less.
For seven years.
Yes, seven years.
Seven percent.
Seven years. Now, what if they tell me, well, you can borrow that for seven percent, but we're only gonna go five years, you don't want that.
We don't want that.
It has to be at least seven years.
Yep.
Yeah.
That messes up our revenue stream even more.
Yeah.
Alright.
So we have a motion and a second.
Make a brief statement to motion, as I understand it. We agree to proceed with the loan with the intent of it being up to six hundred and thirty-eight thousand at seven percent for seven years, that's the max. If you can negotiate it down to five hundred thousand at a lesser rate, then do that, but max of six thirty-eight, seven percent for seven years.
Alright, so that motion is now made by Councilwoman Green.
So your, so what about five hundred at seven percent?
That's.
So, that's what I wanna make sure is that, that.
I understand you that that was okay.
Right, I thought so too.
Yeah, I'd be okay with that.
Okay.
You know, it'll.
And with the seven years.
Right, seven years is okay, seven percent is okay, in matter of.
Five hundred.
Five hundred.
Do you agree with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that motion is on the table from Mr. Green, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Gant. Any more points or discussion? If not, then you can vote electronically.
I gotta read, I got my computer going asleep, me too.
Alright, the motion carries unanimously. Alright. And I think that's it, is there a motion to adjourn? Second, all those in favor say aye. Alrighty then, thanks everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah?
I honestly feel good about that. If I was the bank, why would I take less than six thirty-eight? You know, I didn't say it, you know, I probably spent as much time thinking about this issue.
If the bank knows I'm willing to pay them six thirty-eight, why would they give me?
Two issues that I've really spent a lot of time thinking about.
It's less risk, it's less risk to them.